Freedom is never more than one generation away from extinction. We didn't pass it on to our children in the bloodstream. The only way they can inherit the freedom we have known is if we fight for it, protect it, defend it, and then hand it to them with the well-taught lessons of how they in their lifetime must do the same. And if you and I don't do this, then you and I may well spend our sunset years telling our children and our children's children what it once was like in America when men were free.
Hey, everybody. Welcome to episode number 483 of Gun Freedom Radio, where we engage, we educate, and we inform. We are brought to you by AZ Firearms Auctions.com, where you set the price on guns, ammo, and accessories. I am one of your hosts, Cheryl Todd.
And I'm the other guy, Dan Todd. Our theme today is City Council a Big Deal? And our guest is Zach Lauer. Zach is deeply committed to faith, family, and freedom, and believes that government should serve the people over special interests. He is actively involved in the RFK Junior campaign and played a key role in the MAGMA-Maha Alliance in Arizona during Donald Trump's recent presidential campaign. He is running for Phoenix City Council in District Four to take back Phoenix from out-of-touch politicians and special interests and return local government to the citizens it is supposed to serve.
Well, welcome to the show, Zach Lauer.
Thanks for having me, Cheryl. Really appreciate the opportunity to share about myself and kind of our mission to take back Phoenix and what we're hoping to do at City Council.
Fantastic. And I love how Dan added a word to MAGA. He says MAGMA. It's lava. Hot, right?
Well, it is a hot issue right now.
That is so true. So, you know, we have interviewed people from all over the nation, from different levels of government, people that manufacture guns, people who are involved in advocacy. I think you might be our first interview for a position like City Council. And over the course of the few years since COVID, I personally have started to realize how much power some of these races have, right? These positions have where people don't have to even declare whether they're liberal, independent, conservative, you know, what letter they wear on their chest. But then we vote them in without really vetting the key issues. And then the way that they enact the power we've given them, that's what starts revealing to us, oh, wait, maybe we voted in the wrong person. It really doesn't align with me. And so when I heard that you were running for City Council, which is in much need of balance, I believe. We don't live in Phoenix, but we live in Arizona. Much need of balance of ideas. I thought, you know what? I want to bring you on and have you talk to our audience about this whole position of, you know, what the heck does City Council do? Why did you step into this snake pit of politics? Drag your young family into this arena to run for City Council?
Yeah, great question. Yeah, it's interesting. City Council is a nonpartisan race, but it certainly, party politics play a big role still in the race, for sure. And, you know, Phoenix is the fifth largest city in the country. And we've seen what happens to other big cities with too much liberal control. And I moved to Phoenix 10 years ago. I met my wife here in Phoenix in District Four where I live. Most of our dates take place in District Four where I live. We just had a son that was born in January. And we want to raise our son in Phoenix. We love Phoenix. I fell in love with Phoenix as soon as I got here. My wife's been in Phoenix for more than half her life. And we want to raise our son here. And we don't want it to turn into a Portland, a San Francisco, a Seattle, and LA. And we can kind of already see some of that stuff happening. And so when I got involved in the Maha campaign for RFK Junior and then later for Trump, I noticed that I could make a difference, that people valued what I said. I had a lot of volunteers, independent volunteers, that were kind of pushing for somebody out of our group to run for office. And I saw that as an opportunity for myself and for the city of Phoenix to get better policies and hopefully fix some of the issues. I mean, my wife and I, we shop at Target down the road, 16th and Camelback in Phoenix. It's a nice area. It's a popular area. Everything's locked up. You have to get an attendant to unlock anything that you want out of the store. And that's just, you know, that's a slippery slope. That's the first step, right? We've seen that in San Francisco. We've seen that in LA. We've seen that in these other cities. And then all of a sudden, locking up's not good enough. And these companies move out of those cities and shut down stores in those cities. So there's just a lot to get ahead of. You know, me and my brother would always talk about, especially this last election cycle, I was like, dude, we need to just create a website called Normal People for Congress and start recruiting and vetting people and getting just normal, everyday citizens into government. Because right now, it's just career politician after career politician. It's handpicked, you know, the predecessors handpicking the next person in line. And it's all to fulfill the same agenda. And that agenda is special interests, and that agenda is party politics. And that agenda is not the citizens. It is not the people. And we need to bring back the focus to serving the people of the country, the city, the state, and returning the government back to them. My grandpa was a state senator back in Illinois, on my dad's side. And on my mom's side, my grandpa is from a small-time town in Illinois where he's very active. He's part of the American Legion. He's a pillar of the community. And so beyond just wanting to fix Phoenix, I want to carry on my family legacy of helping the communities that we live in.
Well, Zach, that's great. And, you know, I think a lot of people don't realize how powerful City Council is. I mean, they fund the police, from what I understand, you could correct me if I'm wrong.
Or don't fund the police.
Or don't.
Or, and they, like in Tucson, they made a ruling that all guns that were confiscated, that they be destroyed or sent to Ukraine versus what the law says, which is the Arizona state law says, that they put it back in circulation again. They can't destroy them. But all these powers that they have, and we don't think about that when we vote.
Yeah, talk to us about some of those.
Yeah, it's very true. I mean, local politics matter, right? State politics matter. Federal politics matter. But if you've got a state working against, or if you've got a local municipality working against the state or working against the federal government, like we do here in Phoenix, right? Phoenix mayor doesn't want the police helping with anything to do with deportations, right? So that's one thing. Yeah. Phoenix City Council also, in 2023, passed, wanted to send guns over to Ukraine as well. And luckily, we had legislators that put a stop to that and said, that's against the state law, and we're not doing that. So luckily, we had good legislators. But yeah, if it was up to the City Council, you know, those guns would have been going to Ukraine as well. Another thing is, the good thing about gun laws in local municipalities is, in Arizona, we have very, very great state gun laws. And we have ARS 133108, which preempts local governments from regulating firearms that go against the state. And the state can actually sue local governments or even specific people. Like if I was on the council and I wanted to do something, which I don't at all, they could sue that individual council member as well for going against state laws. So luckily, here in Arizona, and in Phoenix, they can't do it. I'm sure they would have, because it is a 7-2 split right now of Democrats versus Republicans on the council. So I'm sure they would have done something with gun laws if they could. But thank God in Arizona, we have such strong state laws for constitutional carry that the council can't really do much about it.
You said a 7-2 split. What is that? Seven Democrats?
Yeah, seven Democrats, two Republicans right now on the council.
And you would be filling the seat of who? Which side is?
Democrat, Laura Pastor. So she's termed up, so she cannot run again. I've already seen somebody floated out as their handpicked replacement for her, somebody that worked on the transition team for Yasmin Ansari. So if you're familiar with local or with Phoenix or Arizona government, you know who that is. So she's one of the squad members. She's out in Congress right now, in actually my congressional district. I live in a very blue district, so part of my challenge is to change that. And I don't think it's going to be super hard if you just look at the facts. So, you know, hopefully, people are open to facts and will have an opportunity to flip that. We are running on a slate. So how City Council works is there's eight members of the council, and then there's the mayor to make up the nine. There's eight districts, so it's a four-year term. And elections take place every two years. So every two years, there's an election. It's either one, three, five, and seven, or two, four, six, and eight up for grabs. We are trying to run for Republicans in two, four, six, and eight. Right now, we have Matt Evans in District Two, who ran for Phoenix City Mayor. We have Mike Delpreet in District Six, who runs Arizona Real Estate Investment Association. We are actively vetting people for District Eight. But the goal is to take back Phoenix and flip the council from a Democratic majority to a Republican majority. There will be one Republican holdover in one of the odd districts, in O'Brien. And so if we can win Districts Two, Four, Six, and Eight, we'll have a 5-4 split. And then we'll be able to actually do the things that we want to do without being hamstrung.
Well, Zach, I don't understand it, because, you know, you guys, you get elected, right?
Yep.
And I would imagine that the people in your districts don't want high crime. You know, they want to represent, they want to be representatives, you know, cleaning the streets up and not making it where you have to lock up at Target. Why can't they see that?
You would think so, Dan, right? It's pretty obvious to a lot of us. But the problem with these kind of more smaller elections, municipality elections, is there's just not a lot of education. There's just not a lot of voter turnout even. This is going to be in a kind of an off-election year, right? It's not with a presidential election. So it really depends on voter turnout and who can mobilize people to get to the polls and take this stuff seriously. You would think it would be a much bigger priority, Dan. You would think that, right, with the increase in crime and the increase in homelessness, that people would be fed up and would be run into the polls to try to make change. But I just don't think people understand. I don't think they understand the power that City Council has. I don't think they understand how City Council can impact those changes. And so they just don't find it important.
Absolutely. So you mentioned, or Dan had mentioned in your bio, that you're part of a Take Back Phoenix initiative. So I remember in, I think it was around the time of President Trump's first run for president, there was a lot of talk about, well, taking back, taking back the government, taking, you know, the whole make America great again. And then I remember seeing this pushback, saying, what do you mean, take, what do you mean, take back? Take back from who? Take back from, you know? So can you put some structure around that for our listeners and our viewers? What do we mean, take it back? Who took it from us?
Who took it from us? Good question. Special interests, lobbyists, you know? That's who took it from us, right? I mean, we've just seen, hate to bring this up, but Biden just came out with the cancer diagnosis. And, you know, a lot of us saw the cognitive decline in real time, right? We called it out in 2020, 2021, 2022, that like, hey, and we were lied to repeatedly over and over again. Now it's coming out that he was signing stuff with an auto pen. And he's had very, very rapid, bad cognitive decline while he was serving as president. And so that begs the question of, well, then who was calling the shots? Who was running the show? If Biden had this cognitive decline and all this stuff was happening, who was the ones making that happen, right? And I think that's the big thing is, we just, when you get these career politicians and when you get handpicked people by the parties who control, you're not getting representatives for the people. You're getting representatives for those special interests and for those political parties. And so now our government, we don't know, we don't know who's at the head. We don't know who's making these decisions. And that's not the way it's supposed to be. The government is supposed to, we're supposed, the government is supposed to work for the people. And they're supposed to enact the will of the people. And so Take Back Phoenix is, that's what it's about. It's about taking normal, everyday people like myself, who has no background in politics other than helping with some campaigns, has no special interests, has no ties to anybody, but really just wants to make Phoenix a great place to live, a safe place to live, a vibrant community where people can come together and work together and take it away from sending money to special interest NGOs to fight climate change. Why would Phoenix City money need to go to fight climate change? The Phoenix City money needs to go to the things that are important to all Phoenix citizens. As Dan alluded to, you know, public safety is number one for me. I believe in a very limited government. I don't think the government should have control of everything. But one thing the government does need to do is public safety. And in Phoenix, it has been a huge failure. We've had a Democratic leaning on the council for over 20 years. And right now, our fire response, our emergency systems response times are double the national average, right? Five minutes is supposed to be the threshold. We're at almost 10 minutes. And that's the difference between life and death for people. We are 14 fire stations short in Phoenix. 14 fire stations short. We've had a huge population growth, and the council has done nothing to keep up with that growth. We are 600 police officers short in Phoenix. It's just, it's crazy. It's crazy. There's just not enough public services like that, public safety services for all the citizens that live here. And that's the citizens, right? If you want to throw in, how many illegals probably also live in the city of Phoenix? And it's just, you know, people, you know, it's a touchy subject with a lot of people here in Phoenix, the legal immigration. We have a heavy Hispanic population. You've got people that are here, not legally, that are good citizens, you know, that are working and contributing to, and then you've got some that aren't. But all of those influx of people, they have more of an impact than just, you know, a border number crossing, right? It's just, there's impacts when it comes to infrastructure. There's impacts when it comes to affordable housing. There's impacts when it comes to police officers. There's impacts when it comes to fire. Like, there's impacts that go far beyond just a person crossing the border.
Zach, I want to mention, you know, earlier you said, you know, the special interest groups are controlling our government. And anyone with any kind of common sense at all can realize that any blue state, that they're not for the people. It's definitely all for special interests. And one other comment, I do feel that we're swinging over, because now we have a Republican sheriff, chief law enforcement of the state or the county. And I think that's going to be a plus for us. And we just need to get people to realize how important it is to vote and get your voice heard.
So I have a question. And first of all, when I was listening to you answer the question about, well, who took it from us? Really, the locus of control, the responsibility, always falls on the citizen. So I should have said, why did we give this away, right? Because we've been so apathetic at every layer, in every state, for way too many years. I do think there is, as Dan mentioned, a resurgence now of people being more, you know, informed and involved. But I do think we have given far too much away. But my question is, when you talk about, you know, we need 14 more fire stations. And generally, you know, by the time you would get those built, well, now you're going to probably need a couple more than that, right? And then a couple more than that, when those get built. Is the money there? It just needs to be reallocated? Or are we talking people's taxes are going to have to go up to build these things? Like, what is your thought about that?
Well, I would think that the monies, some of the money has to be there, right? There's definitely fraud, waste, abuse. Like, we saw what the, we doge the federal government, right? And we saw all the fraud, waste, and abuse there. There's fraud, waste, and abuse at the state level. There's fraud, waste, and abuse at the local level. So that's one of the things that we're definitely going to do, is doge the Phoenix City Council budget. And we want, we will go line item by line item, looking at everything and trying to find where the waste is and reallocating those funds to the things that matter. Funny, you bring up raising taxes, because that's exactly what the current City Council just did. They raised our taxes in Phoenix, our sales tax by 22%. This was the first time.
Wait, what's that? Or sales tax?
Sales tax. They increased it by 22%.
22% more?
No, 22% of what it was.
Of what it was. Not 22%, but yeah, it was at like 2.1, and now it's 2.8, somewhere around there.
Okay.
Yeah, so they did increase our taxes. That was the first time the city of Phoenix increased taxes without a public vote. So City Council had an option to take that to public vote, to see if the citizens thought that that was the best way to fund some of these shortfalls is by an increased tax. And if the citizens approve that, then great, we're on board, right? We approved it. That's democracy. We like it. We value what it's going to give us, and we're happy to pay the tax. Maybe not happy, but we will pay the tax because of the value we're getting out of it. But they didn't do that. They just said, hey, we represent you. We don't care what you think. We need this in the budget, so we're going to raise your taxes. So that would be a last resort for me. I'm very anti-tax. So taxes would definitely be a last resort for me. I think there is plenty of money. It's a 2.1 trillion, or billion, sorry, billion-dollar budget the city of Phoenix has. So there is plenty of money. We've just got to allocate it better. We've got to, and you're right, we're already in a very bad position based on what the current City Council has done. They did not take steps preemptively with the population growth to get ahead. And so now we are behind. And now we've got a huge hole. And you're right, by the time some of these fire stations actually finally get built, we're going to need even more. So it's a big, big problem. And it's a problem that the current council has had, you know, like I said, 20 years of control by Democrats with the council. So time for a change.
If I was in City Council, I would look at the growth in Arizona and in Phoenix area and say, yes, we need more fire stations, but we're also getting more revenue from the people that are moving into the area. We don't really need to raise taxes. We need to smarten up what we're spending our money on. And we need to make sure that this money counts. And we are already taxed to death, and it needs to stop. They just think, oh, we make a mistake, or we want to give money to another group, then to these, whatever, then, you know, they just do it. And then they worry about where they're going to get the money later.
Yep.
You know, and could I run a business that way? Absolutely not.
Not for long.
Now, one of the other problems that I've seen and I've heard brought up several times is with these, you know, they've got jobs up that they, that outside parties come and bid on, right? To complete for the city of Phoenix. And there's a whole scoring system involved. And I don't know exactly what's involved in the scoring system, but part of it is how much it's going to cost. But it's not the whole thing. And what these companies do, and there's repeat offenders at these. So this is one way to save some money, definitely, is they'll bid on a project. And let's say the minimum to complete the project would be a million dollars. Like, nobody could submit a bid under a million, because there's no way to get the project done for that. A company will come in and they'll submit a bid for 750. And it'll make the score go into their favor. And then they'll get the contract, and then six months down the road, they'll say, ah, the 750 is not enough. We need another 750.
Cute.
And so there's companies that do this over and over again, repeatedly. And we keep giving them contracts. They actually tried to, back when Sal DiCiccio was on the council, he tried to put in a safeguard against this and say, hey, you do this once, maybe, you know, warning slap on the wrist, like, you could have missed, it could have been a mistake, right? It could have been a mistake. But you do this a second time, you've got a five-year ban. You've got a five-year ban from bidding on city projects. And it didn't pass the council, the Democratic-led council didn't pass. So why wouldn't it pass, you would wonder, right? I don't know. Maybe there's some kickbacks going on. Maybe there's some promises of jobs, right? There's lots of things that could go on to, why are we continuing to give contracts to companies who we know are low bidding and going to come back and ask for more money?
Zach, I'd be a little harder on that. If I was in City Council, I'd say, okay, you bid 750. Okay, we'll give you, you know, you need more money? We'll give you 10%. That's it. No more.
That's it.
You know, that's it. You bid, you made the bid. You made the proposal. This is, that's the tough part about being in business, that when you say something, you've got to follow through. That's how I would feel about it.
I'm with you, Dan. So again, we need the whole slate to win, to get this stuff done, though. Because if just I win, if just Matt wins, if just Mike wins, we're not going to be able to accomplish any of this, right?
Do you have an idea, I'm sorry, do you have an idea how we could get to the public to let them know what's really going on and what, how important their vote is?
Yeah, so how we're trying to get to the public is, I'm trying to speak it anywhere I'm invited to. So I've spoken at a couple LD meetings so far, met some really great people. But back to Cheryl's point about the apathetic nature of our voting base. When I go to these LD meetings, it's not my demographic, right? It is an older demographic, for sure. And so one thing I'm going to concentrate on is social media and getting out in front of the younger people and trying to engage the younger people. Because we need voter turnout. We need voter turnout. We need young people to start caring. They're so apathetic, because they, you know, my generation doesn't believe that voting matters. They don't believe that no matter who you vote for, what happens, that the government's just never going to be returned to the people. And so they just don't participate. And so that's a narrative we have to change. And I think that the best way to change that and the best way for people to see how voting matters is at the local level, because it is something that can, they can directly see the impact at a more immediate timeframe. So I'm going to do it with social media. I'm talking at anywhere I can talk to. And then we're going to hit the ground game super hard. We're just going to be door knocking. We need boots on the ground. I think that's the best way to get to people.
I wish we could get to the high schools where these kids could learn something and go to their parents and say, look, here's what we need to do. Why are we keeping away from the schools? Does City Council have any power with that to get kids in school involved?
I mean, they're not the voting block yet, but in a minute, they will be.
Yeah, their parents and the future voting blocks, for sure. Yeah, I think there's definitely, I mean, City Council has a lot of, not direct impact with schools and school budget, but certainly they work close with school boards. They definitely have the, they can get into schools, for sure. So that's a good idea, Dan. You know, when I'm on council, maybe go speak at some schools and get the younger kids involved early to where they find it important, and they can bring it home to their parents as well.
Yeah, because if you go to an event to speak, you're going to speak to people who already know what's going on.
That's right.
Unless they bring a friend. And that, that's, you know, we're speaking to our group. We're not speaking to the people that need to be spoke to. We already know.
Again, I think it's also drawing that direct line so that I could understand my city council. We live in Litchfield Park. It's pretty small, right? Our businesses are in Avondale, Arizona, still fairly small, not this We, our businesses are in Avondale, Arizona, still fairly small, not this huge behemoth like Phoenix. But if I could understand better, inside my household, that city council member whose vote it, they're, they're seeking, right? My vote they're seeking, what, how does it impact my personal life? If we could really draw those lines, then that might help break that it doesn't really matter. Government's going to always do what government does. Um, kind of a, a, um, mental block or a defeatist mindset. Um, and, and so I think that, I, I can see social media helping with that, but that personal, you know, door knocking and, and touching people one person at a time, one household at a time. Um, all of this takes money because time is money, right? Where, how, how is that part of campaigning at the city council level? You know, what do you do to, to raise funds and to get people to help you knock doors and that sort of thing?
Yeah, so to Dan's point, right? When I go speak at LD meetings, you're right, I'm not, I'm just talking to, I'm talking to my crowd. But what those do help with is volunteer base and donations, right? I don't have some machine behind me that's going to just funnel me money. Um, I'm just a guy, so, uh, I need any, I need small donations, right? I need any money that I can get from people to help mobilize the effort. So, um, those LD meetings definitely help in that respect of finding volunteers and finding some money. I do, we do have, we are taking donations on Take Back Phoenix as a slate that can be used for all of us. And then of course we're, we take individual donations as well. So, um, yeah, I'm going to be counting on volunteers and, and small donations from everyday citizens and not, and again, that's going to keep me clean too, right? I'm not going to, I'm not going to be beholden to any sort of special interest. I'm not going to take money from some big developer, right? So that I start making more luxury apartment complexes that we don't need. I just read something the other day, and this is for the entire state of Arizona. So I got to imagine it's a lot worse in Phoenix than the entire state. But a minimum wage worker, which Arizona has a pretty decent minimum wage, it's over fourteen dollars an hour, um, would need to work seventy-seven hours a week to afford median asking rent.
Wow.
Seventy-seven hours a week to afford median asking rent. We're not even talking about being able to buy a home because that's way, that's way out of the picture. But seventy-seven hours a week at minimum wage to just afford rent. It's, that's crazy. We don't need more luxury apartment complexes. Uh, there are, they're all over the place, they're still going up around me. And I, we need, we need affordable housing for people. We need, um, I mean, that's just, I just couldn't get over that number.
And how does city council impact that?
Well, we, we do a lot with city planning and zoning, right? And we, we give the contracts to developers, right? That's, so yeah, we can have a big impact there. Um, I don't have all the answers right now, right? I'm just, I'm, I'm starting to figure it out, but, uh, we've got goals and we're determined and we'll, we'll, we'll find the solutions, we'll find the solutions.
So, um, two things, one is, you know, the minimum wage being artificially shoved up, right? And mandated to people like us who are business owners. That is what has caused so much of the other costs to go up. And people somehow can't do that math when they are, you know, given the opportunity to vote themselves this raise, right? You're also voting yourself a much more expensive hamburger, a much more expensive place to live, right? All of those things get impacted. We've been in, well, we've been married for forty years, we've been in business for all of that time, some business, you know, along the way. The ones we have now, like the auction house is twenty-some years old. When we first opened, I think minimum wage was around seven dollars. So in twenty years' time, it's doubled, right? And has our ability to bring in money doubled? With that, you know, every single hour of every single staff member I have is now twice as expensive as it was twenty years ago? That has to impact things elsewhere. I, I wish that people could, could have a better grasp of that sort of thing. Um, sorry, I'm filibustering now.
You're good, yeah. I mean, if, the, the other problem there is, right? Just because minimum wage goes up doesn't mean everyone else's wages go up, right? So, and that's the problem because then people's dollars are, are not going as far. Um, and the people that just got the minimum wage increase, their basically dollars are going the same amount because of the way prices increased. So, yeah, y- your dollars are going the same, you got a wage increase, but your dollars are going the same. Now, everybody over here who didn't get a wage increase because they were already above minimum wage, their dollars aren't going as far. And that's a bat, that's a recipe for disaster, yeah.
The other thing is, I mean, I guess this is, uh, I, I am like big C conservative, little L libertarian, I think. And, and that L gets a little bit bigger each year, I feel that I get older. Um, and you know, I think, you know, libertarian is freedom, freedom, and by the way, freedom. And when, you know, the, the one side of the coin of, you know, demanding that you, you know, government has mandated that people like us business owners pay you a certain amount of money every hour. The other side of the coin is you've just given away your freedom to, to sell your most precious commodity, which is your time.
That's right.
You have given that away. If you want to be an apprentice, if you want to learn some new thing, if you want to, you know, if we wanted to hire, you know, one of our eighteen-year-old, sixteen-year-old family members to learn this family business and learn all the things that we have, you know, mentor them into this space, I can't pay them any less than fourteen whatever dollars an hour. And so am I bringing them in? Or am I going to bring in the most experienced and qualified person? It, I mean, it's truly, it's sad to me that people can't sell their time for what they value it as. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense. I think it, um, it really, it doesn't allow for just the freedom of marketplace to take place, right? It doesn't allow for businesses, maybe your business would offer three dollars more than a similar business down the road, right? Maybe they're paying minimum wage and you're paying three dollars extra and now you're getting better workers and now your business is growing more and now you can increase their wages because your business is doing better and this business is still stuck over there, right? So it takes away that kind of competitive freedom of marketplace to, um, allow the best, you know, the, the best businesses to thrive and the businesses that, that aren't the best to, to not, right?
If I got a good employee, I'm going to keep him, like, you know, I'm, I'm not going to let him go.
Exactly.
I'll pay him what they need. You know, I just thought about a neat, I, I, I consider a bumper sticker, I guess, that, uh, if crime is high in your city, check with the council.
There you go.
City council, I mean, if, if anybody asked me, why is crime so high? Well, because of our, you, you, you need to check our city council.
Well, I'm telling you, the best bumper sticker is this, uh, Normal People for Congress, the NPFC. I'm, I'm loving that.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
The problem is, there might not be enough of those around.
I know, that's the, that's, that's what we're trying to change, right? I mean, we just, and that's why I stepped up, that's why Matt stepped up, that's why Mike stepped up. It's just, at some point, we have to be fed up enough to where somebody's willing to at least try, at least try to, to take it back. And if we get enough people out trying and we can make a really big movement, we want to, we don't want Take Back Phoenix to end at Phoenix, right? We want Take Back Phoenix to start at Phoenix and move to other cities. We want to take back Los Angeles, we want to take back Seattle, we want to take back all of these once great cities and return them to clean, thriving, safe communities. And if we can do that in Phoenix, maybe we have a model that other cities and hopefully little by little, right, will take back all these municipalities and really make an impact.
Well, and I like the action word there, right? Which, which defies apathy, like we're taking something back, we are, there's an action involved. It's not going to happen naturally, you know? So, um, I love that. I want to, um, ask you this question about, you mentioned fundraising and how important that is. Do you have to live in Phoenix to donate to your campaign? What are the rules around that?
No rules, no rules around that. I had to, um, get a committee, I don't know, I had to file something with the city clerk to be able to accept donations. So, um, I just did that and got approved, so I have a can, a candidate committee. Um, I then have to go get an EIN number, uh, and then I can open a bank account. So I'm in the process of doing that. And then on my website, anybody from anywhere can donate. I've just got to keep track of donations and expenditures and I am supposed to upload that, um, every quarter to the city clerk's office to make sure that I'm not, you know, doing anything bad. But that's pretty much the only rules there.
Well, hopefully by the time this airs, you will have that process in place and tell us the website people would go to.
Yeah, it's zachforphoenix.com.
And that's Z A C H.
H, yeah, Z A C H, don't put a K in there.
And is it a four, a number four?
It's a spelled out F O R.
V A C H F O R, Phoenix.
Yep.
Right? Dot com.
Dot com.
Love it, okay. Now, here's the money question right here.
All right.
What makes you uniquely, uniquely qualified to hold this position?
Yeah, good question. I don't know if I'm actually qualified, right? To be honest with you, I'm not, I don't have any political background. Um, but I have business background, um, and I, I run my household, right? So I at least know how to budget better than Phoenix City Council does. Um, I'm not in massive debt, so I think I'd do it all right there.
Cause you're one of those normal people, right?
Yeah, I think that I, what I do well is I work well with others, you know? Um, I have my values and I'm never going to compromise on my values. But I am very open to other ideas and alternatives and I'm not set in my ways. I'm always open to new data and new statistics, I'm very data-driven. Um, and so if somebody presents me with something that maybe I didn't think I was for and they can present an argument and present stats, then, you know, may, maybe I can change my mind, which I don't think a lot of people can do. I think a lot of people are super, super set in their beliefs and no matter how much new data you give them, right? No matter how many times Biden is talking nonsense, they still won't say he's got cognitive decline, right? They just won't take on new data and change their opinion on anything. I think that's, that's what we need in order to work in government and work together for the people. You've got to, you've got to be able to work together and right now people can't work together. And so I think that's one thing that I bring, I think I bring a sense of just calmness and stability. Um, it's something that, you know, I've, I've run big sales teams, I've done training and recruiting and, um, run, run really big sales teams. And I think I just have a way of, of connecting with people and reaching people that, um, might not have been reached by, by others. So I think that's one thing I'm really good at is connecting with people and kind of bringing people together on a common goal. And I think the common goal here is cleaning up Phoenix and cleaning it up from crime and homelessness and getting affordable housing. And I think that's something that every citizen can, can rally behind and connect on and, and come together. So I, I'm in a democratic district, um, and I, I think that I can, you know, maybe it's naive of me to think, but I think I can, I think I can sway some, some Democrats to vote for me, for sure.
Well, that was a very normal person and very not politician-esque answer, which I, I personally appreciate to the depths of my being. So, uh, and the humility to, to open with, you know, I'm not even sure I'm qualified, but let's explore it. Let's look at it, let's, you know, versus, you know, some air apparent being plugged in there. Um, you know, let's look at, at somebody that's, uh, you know, a non-politician.
So I look at, vote for somebody that may, may have some qualification issues or vote for the people that are definitely failing.
Yeah, no doubt, they've proven it to us.
Something new in there that has a heart, you know?
Last question, and we've got to run. Um, why, we touched a little bit on the right to keep and bear arms, but why is the right to keep and bear arms important? And what can a city council person do that can either positively or negatively impact that right?
Yeah, so the right to bear arms is fundamental, right? It's a fundamental safeguard for individual liberty and our freedom, which is what our country is built on. Without the right to bear arms, uh, any other freedom or liberty be, can be taken away. And, uh, we have no recourse for that once our arms are gone. So our arms protect all of our liberties, not just the right to bear arms. And that's why the right to bear arms is so important because it's a protector of every single liberty and freedom that we have as Americans. We got to protect ourselves, our families and our rights. And without guns, we can't do it, we just can't. Um, so I think we touched on this a little bit, that the Arizona state laws are just so awesome for gun ownership. Uh, the constitutional carry state, um, the fact that the state can sue municipalities for going against state law. Um, really, the only thing that the Phoenix City Council has control over are government buildings is gun-free zones. So that's the only impact I can have is to, to make government buildings not gun-free zones. Um, I don't know, I'd be able to get that accomplished, yeah.
You're, you're saying those government buildings where I can go get a free gun?
No, that's not what that means.
Oh, oh darn it.
Yeah, so, you know, we basically, we can't regulate private businesses, we can't do anything with schools as gun-free zones. Um, you know, there's not, just in other states and other municipalities, it don't have such great state laws. I think that there is more that the council can do to either before or against, uh, gun freedom. But we just, Arizona's just great, it's just a great state for gun freedom.
Absolutely.
Let's keep it that way.
That's right.
Amen. And also, again, these kinds of races are where people get their toe hold. And so if we're not asking these kinds of questions of people who are, you know, seeking these offices, then there'll be city council one day, the next day there'll be governor, the next day there'll be a senator. And, uh, so that's why it's important.
You're exactly right. I mean, I, I mentioned her earlier, Yasmin Ansari, she started on city council and then now she's at the House in Washington DC. And, uh, you know, uh, she's, she's one of their handpicked people. So I'm sure she's going to maybe sen, senate after Rubin. I mean, Rubin came out of my district as well, my congressional district. So they've got a, they've got a machine, right? And they're just going to keep moving them up. So, um, it's important again, if, if, maybe if Yasmin never got that city council seat, she wouldn't be sitting in Washington DC right now. So, uh, that's why, again, local politics is, is important on a lot of levels.
Awesome, all right. Well, tell folks as we go out, um, how they can, uh, follow what you're doing, how they can support what you're doing, because every campaign runs on those two things we already mentioned. Um, it's money and it's people power.
Yep, so you can follow me on social media at ProZach, P R O Z A C H five. That's on Instagram, that's on X, that's on TikTok. Um, my website is zachforphoenix.com, Z A C H F O R phoenix.com. You can also find us at takebackphoenix.com, um, for the whole slate. And, yeah, I think that's, that covers them.
Well, fantastic. And you have introduced me, uh, via text to your, your other, uh, the people on your slate, Matt Evans and Mike Dell. How do you pronounce it? Dell Pre.
Mike Dell Pre, yep.
So I'm going to be reaching out to them and we might be having a couple more interviews, uh, to discuss this. So, um, thank you so much for all that you're doing. Uh, I know that anytime someone runs for office, it is a family event. And so I thank your wife as well for, for being your best supporter. And, uh, we will be cheering you on and, uh, checking back with you, see how things are going.
Awesome, thanks for having me, Dan and Cheryl, appreciate the opportunity to be here.
Thank you for being here, thank you.
Bye bye.
Bye.
Zach Lauer.
Yes.
I love it. Uh, we met him at a small gathering, uh, uh, an event that got put together and, you know, had a chance to just kind of, you know, it was small enough that we could actually have conversations. And I was really impressed, um, with, uh, just the idea that a young man with a brand-new baby and, you know, a fairly young marriage would be stepping into a role like this. And, you know, the entrepreneur in me loves that he's And, you know, the entrepreneur in me loves that he's figuring it out as he goes.
Right.
I love that, you know, don't sit and wait until you think you're a constitutional scholar before you run for office, because I guarantee you, most people who've been elected, that they don't, they're not even sure that there is a constitution, even though they took an oath, right, to protect and preserve it. And we have an Arizona constitution, even fewer people know that. But I am, um, I'm excited to see that, I'm hoping that he inspires people all across this nation to step up, step forward and, and serve in these, these ways. But right now, we need to start wrapping up, I want to, again, thank our awesome guest, Zach Lauer. I wanna thank all of our amazing viewers and listeners all over the nation. Wherever there's internet, we have people hungry for this information and we appreciate you. Thank you so much for, you know, liking and sharing and subscribing and hitting the notification button when you go and find these videos. And I, I would just ask anybody new who's, who's going to be doing that, um, to go to YouTube, go to Gun Streamer, go to the obsolete smartphone apps, Spotify, any of these places. And please hit the subscription and notification button, because it tells those platforms that you value this information. Plus, as soon as we put out a new episode, you get notified immediately. Um, if you wanna listen to the audio-only version, go to our website, gunfreedomradio.com, click the On Demand tab and...
Binge listen to your heart content, darling.
Darling, and if you wanna see the links and photos and bios of all the guests we've ever had on, all of the subject matter experts, click the guest tab, it is an ever-growing database, and when you spend time there, we don't hate that. All right, we wanna thank the organizations that support the work that we do. First out of the gate today is patriotmobile.com forward slash G F R for Gun Freedom Radio. If you go there today and you switch over your phone, we are all carrying around these phones and so many of us are paying companies that do not support our values, but patriotmobile.com does. If you go there today and you use the promo code G F R for Gun Freedom Radio, you will not only receive one free month of service, but you will also experience the exact same great service from the exact same towers that you've been using. But you also get, uh, an opportunity for them to buy out whatever contract you have. That was one of the big key holdups that I personally had, is I wasn't sure what to do with the current contact track I had. And patriotmobile.com forward slash G F R will buy that out for you, check it out.
And you keep the same number, too.
You do, and you know what, I realized you can add numbers, you can have more than one phone number on your device, which would be brilliant, you know, if you have a business number and a personal number. Check it out, they will guide you through all of that. Also, patriothousehold.com forward slash G F R is an invitation-only shopping network. Today is your invitation from Dan and I personally to start spending your dollars there instead of the big-box stores, because again, big-box stores are working against your values. Patriothousehold.com forward slash G F R. You can buy all the stuff that you use to clean your house, clean your hair, clean your dishes, right?
Speaking of which, when's the last, when did we start that program?
Oh, gosh, uh, a year and a half or so ago.
So today, I'm at the bottom of my shaving cream, one, one bottle has lasted a year and a half.
Is that right?
Yeah, and we still have more, so you don't need to order more, but I, I...
That's amazing.
A year and a half, and I use it every day, I use it every day.
That's awesome, it's good quality, um, it lasts.
Makes me so pretty.
Right, makes me so pretty, and also, you place your order online, it shows up at your doorstep.
Right.
Saves you gas, right, saves you time, I love it. So check it out, patriothousehold.com forward slash G F R. Also, um, you know, those of us that, that carry firearms, right, and we train for self-defense, if and when you are ever in a situation where you have to defend your life, you will need an attorney on retainer. So go to our website, gunfreedomradio.com, the homepage, scroll down for attorneysonretainer.com. Tell them we sent ya, and we get a little piece of every, uh, dollar that you spend there as well. All right, we gotta get out of here, we are going to pray for our nation, pray for our leaders and what about the ones we don't like too much, Dan?
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Maybe pray especially for them?
Well, actually, let's, let's do that, I do wanna say a prayer for Biden, you know? He's not my favorite, he's done a lot of things that I don't like.
That's true.
But he is a person, and we should be praying for him, for his recovery.
Absolutely, all right, until next time, be good to each other, have a great week, and God bless.
Bye bye.